Good evening, and welcome to our St. Paul City Council Ward Four Candidate Forum. My name is Florence Sprague, and I'm a League-trained moderator and a member of the Rosevalerie League. However, I live in Maple Woods, or love them, or hate them, I can't vote for them. Today's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of St. Paul, St. Paul Neighborhood Networks, and Fair Vote Minnesota. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization, and one of our missions is to have an informed and engaged electorate, and this tonight's event would be a part of that. We do not endorse any candidate or party. We believe the success of St. Paul depends on the values, knowledge, and commitment of our elected officials. Thus, it's essential for the public to better understand the views, opinions, and commitments of people running for elected office in St. Paul. It is this understanding that better equips voters with information to make informed voting decisions. We appreciate the time given tonight by the candidates and the audience members. It's not easy when everyone is so busy. Before we begin, I'd like to remind you that you have cards on your chairs for writing questions for the candidates, and if you have a question written, please hold it up, and a volunteer will collect it. Questions may then be consolidated, but we never have time for every topic, so be sure if your question doesn't get answered that you follow up with the candidate, check out their website, look at their literature. There are other ways, but we hope to get through as many topics as possible tonight. Okay. If you'd like to register to vote, maybe you've moved since the last election, stop by the League's table outside in the lobby, and they can help you do that. Okay, before we get started, we have a speaker tonight about ranked choice voting, just to give us a little information so we understand that.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Mai Yi, and I am a community organizer with Fair Vote Minnesota. Fair Vote Minnesota is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization, and their mission is to reform the electoral system, and we advocate for ranked choice voting. So, as you may know, the city council race is a ranked choice voting one, and that means you get to rank all of these candidates in order that you like them the best. If your first choice doesn't have enough votes to go on, your vote will transfer to your second choice, and your second or third choice never harms your first, and ranking the same candidate multiple times does not help them. So, it always maximizes your voice and power to rank your ballot. So, today, listen for not only who your favorite may be, but how you might like to rank them. So, if you have any more questions about how ranked choice voting works, I do provide literature out there in the table, and I, if you're also interested in voting by mail, I also provided absentee voting forms out there as well. And please, again, this year's election is on November 5th, and do plan on ranking your candidates, and fill out the pledge card, which I do provide it out there, too. Fill out pledge cards, and to let my organization know that we have people out here who supports ranked choice voting, and will rank their candidates. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mai. Okay, this evening's forum, as we said, is for the candidates running for Ward Four. We have three candidates seated to my left, and I will, beginning with Chris Holbrook, Mitra Jalali-Nelson, and Terrence Robertson-Balas. As the evening goes on, though, I'm just going to use first names, they've all agreed to that. Okay? The candidates participating in tonight's forum have all agreed to forum rules which were included in their invitation, and these are standard League rules about how we run events. Each candidate will be given a two-minute time for giving an opening statement. They will have one minute to answer questions. A timer is seated in the front row, okay, over here, and he will hold up warning signs as your time is used up. Candidates may use notes, but not electronics during the forum. We will accept written questions, as I said, throughout the forum. Questions must not be personal in nature, and they should pertain to topics relevant to the position. All questions must be addressed to all candidates, and we will, volunteers will collect them if you hold them up. Again, if they're personal, embarrassing, hostile, or unclear, we won't use them, and questions that we collect all become property of the League. Similar questions may be consolidated or edited for clarity and brevity. All campaign literature needs to stay out in the lobby, not in this room. Please remain quiet as possible, so that everyone may hear, and hold your applause till the end of the forum, so that all of the time goes to the candidates, not to our applause. And, please, silence your cellphones. If, for some reason, you do have to take a call, step out into the lobby so it won't disturb the forum. Okay. Please know that members of the media may be recording this forum for their own use, and that this forum is being recorded by our partner, St. Paul Neighborhood Network. If you check on their website, they have an elections page, and you can find when it's being broadcast, and when it will be on their YouTube channel, and many other forums that they've also taped. With that, we're going to go to our opening statements. Again, candidates, you have two minutes, and they drew numbers as they came in, and Chris Holbrook has the first opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Florence. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, and of course, SPNN and Fair Vote. I'm going to start out with a confession today. I'm not proud of this, I'm not happy, but I activated my furnace, so I wish it would stay warmer a little longer while we knock on doors. But anyways, my name is Chris Holbrook, and I'm running for Ward Four City Council. I live in the Hamlin Midway neighborhood. I've owned my home for 20 years. I own a duplex, I rent out. My wife, Angie, I've been married 16 years. We have a dog, Baxter, the boxer, no children. And I'm running, I'm assuming we'll get to all these topics tonight, so if not, my literature is out on that table, but my platform is to fix the trash debacle, to fix the roads, which I nicknamed "free parking," and to create a safe community policing environment. I really believe Ward Four deserves a representative of the people to the government, instead of a representative of government to the people. And if elected, if I receive enough of your votes, I intend to listen and include all input into a community solution that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next opening statement is from Mitra Nelson.
Hi, well, thank you so much, League of Women Voters, for organizing this, to SPNN for covering it, and to all of you for being here and being part of this important conversation. My name is Mitra Jalali-Nelson, I prefer to just go by Mitra. I'm really proud to be representing us here in Ward Four on the St. Paul City Council. I am serving my first year in office after winning a gritty special election last year. I ran in a moment where our city was and continues to be tremendously changing. We have 20,000 new residents in our city, we have only about 4,000 new places that we've made for them to live. We have a younger, more diverse-than-ever population alongside generations who've built their home here, and I ran to lead that change, to be a new progressive voice for our future, and to make city government work better for our community. I'm also running to break down the barriers between our city government and our community. For so long, the City Hall has been this opaque, unclear structure, and I really ran to bring a whole new voice and perspective to those spaces, to push conversations when they're uncomfortable, to lead on the issues that I and my community care about and need to be addressed in the future, like police accountability and community-first public safety, like our housing crisis and its myriad challenges, like building our community wealth, especially for communities historically disinvested in and disenfranchised, and for taking action on climate, one of the most urgent challenges of our time. So, I'm very honored to represent you. I look forward to the discussion tonight, and I'd love to keep leading change for a full four-year term this year at City Hall. Thanks.
Thank you. And the final opening statement from Terrence Robertson-Balas.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Terrence Robertson-Balas. Also, thank you to the League of Women Voters and SPNN, and most importantly, to the residents for being here. I truly am humbled to be sharing this space with you, and I'm really happy to see so many people turn out for this. From a young age, at the age of 21, I was facing homelessness. I was homeless. I was facing substance abuse issues, and I was in and out of jail. And it was at that time that I knew that something had to change, or there was a really good possibility that I could die, a very realistic possibility that I could die. And that's when I decided to enlist in the military, which truly I credit to saving my life. And from there, I went on to build the substance abuse program for the Minnesota National Guard. I went back to college and graduated with a degree in biomedical science, and then led the effort for the substance abuse and suicide prevention programs across the seven state region. I am a major in the Minnesota National Guard. I just got back from my second deployment overseas, where I did strategic planning across multiple countries in the Middle East. And oh, by the way, I'm openly transgender, serving in Trump's administration, which proves inherently challenging, and I have fought tooth and nail for trans equity and trans rights in an administration that continues to try to kick me out of the military. Since getting back from deployment, I have been hired by Minnesota State Colleges and Universities to serve as their project director for diversity, equity, and inclusion for all 54 campuses across our state. And so, I went from all those things at a young age to accomplishing all of that, and the issues that we face here in our city are extremely real to me because I've lived it, and these aren't just talking points to me. I am running because I believe that our city is truly failing its residents. We have year-after-year tax increases, our infrastructure is crumbling, our city is gentrifying, and yet, nobody seems to have a plan. And we need a leader. Why am a leader? And not only am I a leader, but I am a leader that always has, and I'm a leader that always will stand up for the people and the causes that I represent. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the opening statements. Now, we'll go to the questions. The first one, and I will be shifting the order around, I will just warn the cameraman and the candidates, but to begin with, we'll just go in the same order, we'll, for the first round or two. So, then, we'll shift down, one, two, so Mitra will go first. Okay. Please tell us about your leadership ability and experience, and how that would translate to a council position.
Well, I come to this work in a lot of different identities. I am the proud daughter of immigrants from two different countries, who have spent all my life figuring out how to make our Minnesota community work better for everybody. I'm a former classroom teacher of an alternative high school. The majority of my students were in the juvenile justice system, were students of color, and were disproportionately overpoliced, undersupervised, and I am extremely passionate about supporting young people and diverse communities in my work today. I'm a former policy aide. I fought for immigration rights and for better community-first public safety, as then Congressman Allison's policy aide in his district office. And that experience showed me what it looks like to do transformative work that organizes people, that sources policy based on their experiences, and helps people feel connected to our government. Lastly, I'm a community organizer that has worked really hard to fight for school funding, to fight for housing justice, to fight for LGBTQ rights, all the things that are a part of my personal story, and I have been serving a year in office now, representing our community, and I have learned firsthand what it's going to take to move our city forward, so I'm proud to be doing that work.
Thank you. Next response from Terrence.
Can I just repeat what I just said? No, just kidding. Leadership is something that just kind of comes naturally to me. I mean, I've been doing it now almost the majority of my adult life, and I excel in the military because I elevate the voices of the people that I serve. And the best-laid plans are those that are developed by, with, and through the people that you represent or that you serve, and that's what's made me so successful as a leader because I don't claim to have all of the answers, and instead, I rely on the people that I'm serving with to help me develop, in their best interests and in our best interests, the plans that drive us forward. And I've served in extremely chaotic environments, where sometimes, you know, I don't have a lot of time to put into developing a plan, when, where people's lives are literally on the line. And I don't take that lightly. And again, because I've, or because of the people that I've served with, and the way that I treat my leadership, that is the reason why I've been so successful, and those are the skills that I'll carry forward with me as a city council representative.
Thank you. And the final response on this question from Chris.
Well, excuse me. I don't have military experience or city government experience. My experience is with people. My job for the last 25 years has been as a sales leader at my company, which involves listening to people and meeting their needs. And that's why I'm running. I really put a focus on serving the people that you're representing. As Terrence alluded to, you guys come first, and I feel at times, our city leadership is a little arrogant and dismissive of the people they're serving, and they do not listen. Really, you are the leaders, and we should be representatives, and that's my philosophy.
Thank you. For the third quest, for the next question, Terrence will begin the responses. What have you done to provide and encourage constructive dialogue respectful of both sides of the trash debate?
The trash debate specifically? Well, the most important thing, again, that I do is listen, and that's, you can't understand things holistically if you're not willing to engage in difficult conversations, and to listen to both sides of an argument. And I feel like, right now, I think that we're getting a little bit of disinformation because the city isn't being completely truthful in the way that, you know, because we could have the opportunity to get out of this contract through the force majeure, and it's more about informing people in an unbiased manner, whether that's the trash, or whether that's on any issue. And so, instead of trying to divide people, it's hearing from both sides. How does this affect you, and what do you like about it, what do you not like about it? And I think that's incumbent upon those of us in leadership positions to take everything into consideration, and to try to bridge divides, no matter what the issue is, is to hear it holistically, and to not try to divide our community even further, but to try to unite one another so that we can all benefit. And you're never going to get 100% of the people to agree. That's not realistic. But again, we shouldn't be the people that are dividing our communities, we should be the people that are uniting our communities.
Thank you. And the next response from Chris.
Can I repeat everything you just said? I have a very similar philosophy. I have been very active in submitting input and participating in the dissent of the trash mandate, because it has not allowed sharing, it has not allowed zero-wasters to opt out and haul their own trash. It's really become a burden on poor people, and unfortunately, 22% of St. Paul lives below the poverty line. Those people are impacted the most. The hearings I've gone to, it's been a split, 50-50, 45-55, for or against, and I think it's been disingenuous and not taken to heart that the city has had a lot of public input and involvement in making this decision. And I'm further disheartened that they have fought over 6,000 residents who signed a petition to ask for a referendum on this, using taxpayer money all the way to Supreme Court. I just, I really don't believe that's appropriate behavior.
Thank you. And the final response on this question, Mitra.
Sure. I was sworn in on September 5, 2018. I hit the ground running, and I literally went into my new office, and there were voicemails, phone calls, and emails piling up because people were trying to understand what is happening to my garbage on October 1, 2018, which is the date that it actually all rolled out. We just passed the one-year anniversary of this new program. I've spent so much of my first year in office actually just listening to people in the rollout of this very, very new, big, huge system for our city, to understand where is it working, where does it need to be better? And the common things I've heard are very simple, they boil down to generally three things. The first is just one-to-four apartment, one-to-four unit apartment buildings, the sort of duplex, triplex, used to be able to cart-share, now they can't. So, that's something I think we need to look at to fix the contract going forward. It's zero-waste and low-waste people who feel like they're being punished under the current contract, and want to be rewarded for doing the right thing environmentally. I think that's something we can fix, and should. And lastly, it's condos and townhome associations. So, we're working to fix those things through the contract. I'd like to see that work continue. I've tried very hard to hear out what people are going through.
Thank you. For the next question responses, we'll begin with Chris. What is the single most powerful action the city could do to help its seniors age in place?
I believe the taxes in this city end up raising costs on rents and services unnecessarily. We're having a discussion with the Episcopal Homes Community in a week or two, so I don't have any senior relatives in the city, so I would look to seek input, and receive those suggestions, and evaluate them as such.
Thank you. Mitra.
Well, I think that we have to embrace and create a range of housing options for people in our community that helps the new generation move in, and helps the generation that's retiring find a new place to live nearby. In my first year in office, I've worked on the Luther Seminary site. That's a big, big opportunity for our seniors in St. Anthony Park, many of whom are aging and retiring and want to find a place to live. There's going to be an affordable senior co-op there, there's going to be some market rate, and there's going to be a mix of other things that the St. Anthony Park Community Council is working with community in my office on. So, that's an example of the kind of project I've been proud to support. But right now, we simply have a lack of affordable senior housing. We do have great examples, like Episcopal Homes, which kind of, actually, I learned recently, started the wave of being willing to create housing on university, and create housing specifically for seniors, especially on fixed income, but those are the kinds of things we need to replicate. We can't stand still, we've got to take action on that.
Thank you. And Terrence.
I was pleased to see the city take action on allowing accessory dwelling units to be more accessible for people, to have family members that want to live with you. My mother-in-law lives with us right now, and we've got three generations living underneath one roof. And that's a very cultural thing for my family as well, because my, my wife's side of the family is Mexican-American, and I think we need to do more to be able to make it easier for our residents who have differing cultural norms to be able to live underneath one roof, and not make it punitive necessarily, because there's a lot of prohibitive things that enable people from having multiple people under one roof. Not only that, but we need to keep costs low, and we can't continue to keep costs low if our taxes go up year after year after year, and our city keeps getting sued year after year after year. Those things don't go hand-in-hand, so we need to stop the madness in order to keep affordability here within St. Paul.
Thank you. Responses to the next question will begin with Mitra, and we're going to change directions. We're going to come this way, to the candidate's right, instead of the candidate's left.
Changing it up?
Yeah. So, if I, if I miss you, then you have to remind me, if I get lost. Okay. Would you commit to opposing any attempt to repeal ranked choice voting in St. Paul?
Oppose attempts to repeal it? Yes, yes, I can commit to supporting that. I'm assuming it's a yes or no, so.
Well, I mean, you have your minute if you want to say more about ranked choice.
Yeah, I think it's a good evolution. I think it allows for multiple voices to be heard. I've been a strong supporter and always advocated ranked choice. I would not want to see that go away in our city.
Okay. So, that means we're coming this way. So, Chris.
Agreed.
Oh, okay. Terrence.
I also support ranked choice voting. I would like to see that continue in St. Paul.
Okay. That was easy. Okay, the next one. So, let's see, if we're coming this way, we'll go Chris, and then we'll round that way. Okay. Party politics. Do you think St. Paul is a one-party town? If so, do you feel that the party has too much influence over nonpartisan races?
Should I start? Yes, and yes. Would you like more?
I would.
I think it's pretty evident, St. Paul's a one-party town. It's, unfortunately, in my mind, the DFL came out, was it today, or yesterday, to try and influence the outcome of the referendum on trash. This is a nonpartisan issue, it affects every citizen, and they're trying to turn it into a partisan one, to put their foot and their support on the scale of the people that they have in office, which is everyone. So, to say it's not one-party, I think, is disingenuous, and, you know, that, that creates a power structure that can't be denied, and it's hard to fight, so.
Okay. And Terrence.
Yes, I do believe this is a one-party town, and I believe that, right now, with everything that's happening in politics, it's extremely divisive, and it's a dumpster fire at the national level. I mean, there's no easy way to put that. But we can't have that kind of divisiveness here in our own communities. And I have worked in the military, you know, for the last 14 years, with extreme far-right conservatives and far, far-left liberals, but again, I don't have a choice but to work with my counterparts to get the job done, because again, I'll say it again, people's lives are literally on the line, and that's how I treat this, because we can't come at things being so divided, and they can be as divided as they want at the state and the national level. But here at the community level, we have the ability to truly come together, to listen to one another, to effect change. So, yes, it is a one-party town, but that doesn't mean that everybody's voices, regardless of your political affiliation, aren't equally as important, because that is how we move progress forward. We have to get away from being so divisive, because we are all in this together.
Thank you. And Mitra.
You know, I'm a proud DFLer. I think that our party values are about championing better working conditions and living conditions for some of our most vulnerable families, for standing up for human and civil rights. I guess I'm, I'm not ashamed of my party affiliation, and I also feel like, in terms of our community, even if there is a preponderance toward that, that does not mean all those people agree with each other. There's a wide range of opinion within our current community and our leadership about how we should take on the problems in our future. And I've been very, very clear about what my values are and what I stand for. And when you get into this job and see that it's really about getting to the heart of a matter, the core facts at hand, how you need to solve the problem, what the root cause of the problem is, I think that that is really where the work happens, and it's about hearing people out, listening to them. So, you know, I think I am not afraid to say who I am and what I believe in, and fly my flag high and proud, and I've also brought those values to heart in the work I do every day for our city.
Thank you. And let's see. The next question will begin with Terrence, but then it's coming around this way, right?
Getting confusing.
Yeah, okay. Okay. What is, in your view, a significant unused piece of property in your ward, and what would be an ideal use for it?
Well, that's a great question. We, within Ward Four, well, in Ramsey County in general, there is no green space that has already not been developed on. So, every place that we're developing here within, not only the city, not only Ward Four, but within the entire county, has already been developed on once before, so we actually don't have any new areas of development. I would really like to see us move forward here within the area that we're actually in right now. We have a lot of industrial area here within Ward Four, probably some of the largest amounts of industrial area within our city, and I think we have a phenomenal opportunity for development here and for infill, particularly for housing, right along our green, our green line, and I would love to see that move forward. And it was great to see the city classify this area recently over here as a creative enterprise zone, and the entertainment district as well, because it's brought forth a lot of economic prosperity and diversity to our ward here in St. Paul.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm staring at this saying, okay, where am I going now to Mitra, right?
So, you know, I was really glad to pass the entertainment district and the creative enterprise zone, so I'm really proud of that accomplishment in my first year in office, and I think it really does echo the belief I've had about how we can remake these spaces for our community. I wholeheartedly see opportunity across our industrial land areas to become mixed-use, both light industrial and also commercial, and a whole range of residential, and a range of affordability. There are a lot of lots right now in the Midway neighborhood that are unused, and we have a problem around making them into something more purposeful, because what's happened is that speculative interests are camping on them, and they're not letting anything happen to them, because they're waiting for their golden ticket to be able to cash out and just sell it to the highest bidder. So, when I look at where the most need is and the most opportunity, it's around helping shape equitable development in the Midway neighborhood, where the stadium, while it has been a huge, huge project for our community that has brought a lot of new life and vitality to the neighborhood, also means we need to charter a course forward for the rest of the land for public benefit.
Thank you. Okay.
I live in the Midway neighborhood. I'm not familiar with a lot of empty lots there. I'm more concerned about the empty and shuttered businesses you see as you roll down Grand Avenue and University. I think the city has been, created a somewhat hostile environment with taxes and regulations, and it's really forced a lot of existing uses to close, so I would like to address those.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, let's see, we're going to begin with Chris and go back the other way again. As a St. Paul City Council member, how would you, individually or in concert with the rest of the council and the mayor, attempt to address any concerns you may have related to the growth and expansion of charter schools? So, basically, charter schools.
Not having children, I don't have exposure to charter schools. I support vouchers to go to the school or live in the house you want. I believe that's something to be addressed by the school board and brought to the council. Not being in the council, I don't have a better answer than that. better answer than that.
Okay, since we're going left, Mitra?
So, this is something that I've gotten to dig into in my time on the council, because the charter school community in St. Paul comes to the city for facilities and expansion approvals through the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And there's something called conduit bond financing, which is essentially where the charter applies to the city to be their agent to help them qualify for a type of bond that helps them move their project forward. And the city doesn't actually do anything besides be the on-paper sponsor, essentially, but it has a secondary impact on our community from the tax base that we lose or don't gain back because the charters are there. So, this is a mechanism that I've asked to look at. I'm really proud to be endorsed by the St. Paul Federation of Educators, which has also been working with me on this issue to make sure we have a healthy balance. I feel very, very strongly that we have to have a healthy school environment, that we should support our St. Paul public schools first in evolving and supporting all of our community needs. As a classroom teacher, I've brought that work with me in everything I've done, including on the council.
Thank you. And the final response, Terrence?
I believe that as a city, we have an inherent responsibility to work with our, our school board and with our, our county and our state officials, particularly around education. While it's not primarily our responsibility, we are all a part of this process. And one thing that is concerning for me with regard to charter schools is often, they are backed by corporations that aren't even within the state. And they get, so they get a lot of our public funding and public tax dollars, and in some cases, millions upon millions of tax dollars for development and/or redevelopment. But there is an inherent lack of transparency on the organizations that are behind charter schools. And when you ask them for information, it's often clouded. And we, I would like to see a lot more transparency surrounding, you know, not only how and what their interests are, but who is backing a lot of our charter schools and, and what their interests within our city are.
Thank you. Okay, so now, let's see, the next one will begin with Mitra, and we're going left. What is your position on aidmill road improvement, parkway versus repaving?
I've been excited about the proposal to convert it into a part-bikeway, part- roadway. I voted against an earlier proposal to only fund a $3.5 million improvement to aidmill road without any kind of new vision. There are so many commuters from out of St. Paul that use aidmill road mainly to get through St. Paul. They don't come into the city, they don't spend tax or dollars here, they don't actually stop. They're just using it to go through, and we pay for them to tear up the road. And so, I'd like to see that road benefit residents better, and if you actually create that connection, you can support huge bike projects across the Twin Cities, like the Midtown Greenway, which would go through the heart of Ward Four, which I've been a huge, huge, huge advocate for. So, I'd really like to see that go through. It's a long, long, long-running plan, over 20 years in the making. It has support from previous councils and administrations, and I think that it's about time. So, I'm really excited about moving that plan forward for our city.
Thank you. And to Terrence?
I use my bike to commute to work, but I'm, I'm concerned about reducing from a four-lane down to a two-lane road. And I would like to see a more comprehensive plan on how we could make both work, so how we could continue to have enough lanes, along with having a bike and a walking path. And my understanding is that the railroad that's right next to the aidmill road will not sell. But, I would still like our city to bring in a designer to see how we can make both of those things happen, because that road was designed to connect to 94. And they have over 20,000 cars that travel on that road each and every single day. So, it would be, and the studies that have been done on it are about 20 years old, you know, and so I think we, we need to do our due diligence through proper planning to make sure that we're not disproportionately affecting our neighborhoods by pushing increased traffic into our neighborhoods. And I think it's not a, again, it's not a either this or that. I feel like there is a way that we could move both forward to accomplish not only meeting the needs of increased pedestrian and bicycle traffic, but also making sure that we can support the proper amount of traffic flow through the area.
Thank you. And to Chris?
They both make good points. I think we can have great bike paths and support the roads without choosing one over the other. On aidmill road, honestly, it's probably the last road in the city we should spend money on. As she said, people use it to get through and around St. Paul instead of coming into St. Paul. If you're going to make it more useful to the neighborhood, it needs a lot more work than the $5 million or whatever they're going to do to it right now. There are approximately $20 million of residential streets that are crumbling, that need attention before that street does. I don't support turning roads into bike paths. I think we can find solutions to create separate spaces for each. And, as I said, we have, we have greater needs on our roads in this city.
Thank you. And for the next one, the responses will begin with Terrence. And I'd like to ask the timer to make this a two-minute, because I am looking at two questions here that are sort of bookends, opposite sides of the money issue. And I'm going to give them to you together, because they sort of, you may want to link them. On the one hand, regarding the rise in property taxes, how do you represent constituents frustrated with giving a greater portion of their spending when they don't feel like the city is coming through with what they need? And on the other hand, the city does not have sufficient revenue for all the needs we're discussing. How can we increase revenue?
Okay, those are both great questions. Thank you. So, yes, I share in that sentiment, because it doesn't, property taxes don't affect just homeowners. They affect renters, they, they affect small businesses, they affect the ecosystem of our entire city. My wife and I are young homeowners, and my mortgage has gone up $400 a month in three years. That is not sustainable, nor should it be sustainable. And when we look at ways that we fund our city, it's disproportionately getting shouldered onto property owners through property taxes. And there are other ways that we can utilize, either whether it's fees or certain other taxes on motels or whatnot, to, to fund creative, like our Housing Trust Fund. There are other ways that we can fund our city's projects. And our city lacks true transparency and a real plan, which is why we continue to be facing lawsuits year after year. This, we are spending hundreds of millions of dollars in lawsuits, and each and every single one of them. Every time the city gets sued, it has lost. We haven't won a single lawsuit. And rather than just settling upfront or admitting that they're wrong, they fight them all the way to the Supreme Court each and every single time. When is that going to stop? When are they going to take accountability and stop putting this back onto the residents of St. Paul, exacerbating the problems? But I guess that's what we get. And that's not fair. It's not fair to our residents, it's not fair to our businesses, it's not fair to the people who want to live in this city, it's not fair to anybody. And we can do better. In fact, we must do better than this.
Thank you. And the next would be Chris?
This city is great at creating staffing positions and not much else. We have an unbelievable addition to the city payroll. Every time a resolution, suggestion ordinance gets passed, they create a new department and add new, new headcount. The former city council person for this ward, obviously Russ Stark, went into a brand-new position for resiliency officer. They're adding a assistant for him now. They're currently adding a district council manager. They've created a Department of Sick Time Leave Enforcement. They created positions to implement the trash mandate. All of these costs, I think, need to be looked at, because we're not spending money on the actual projects or needs. Raising revenue outside of property tax, I believe there's some creative solutions which haven't been offered, explored by our current city council, such as PILOT, Payment in Lieu of Taxes. It was explored a couple years ago, it's never been implemented. That is a program where you ask the non-tax-paying entities in the city to contribute a, a share. There are 27% of the properties in the city that pay no property tax. There are the stadiums, the universities, entertainment venues, government buildings. They consume a lot of services. This program works partially, you don't get everything you ask for. But, for example, Macalester College, they have an endowment, a savings account of approximately $800 million. No property tax paid, they consume 53 acres of prime real estate. I don't think it's unrealistic to ask them to contribute. Their rate would be 1.9 million. Even if they threw in half of that, that would really ease the burdens on the proposed 22% this year, 10 and 1/2% last year, 24% the year before. All of those increases make housing less affordable for everyone.
Thank you. And to Mitra?
I think we need to balance responsible tax rates with a mix of other strategies. One, there's a lot of homeowners that disproportionately bear the burden, because we're not like Minneapolis. We have most of the same amount of population, but something like a third of their budget, because we don't have a giant, huge company presence in our downtown. Our downtown is very government, it's very churches and other historic landmarks, which is great, but it does have a revenue impact. We have huge universities, we have all these other churches and nonprofits all throughout the city that don't pay into the tax base. And so, we do have to make that up somewhere. And supporting and embracing new development at a whole range of uses and income levels and case-by-case basis with community input is actually part of how we have to make up the gap. It's just about sustaining our city. There has been talk about PILOT, so, you know, that, that is a program proposal that's been researched. It would essentially ask those entities to make a contribution back to the city. And I feel like that work has kind of fallen through the cracks. It was something taken up before I got into the city council, but I think it's time to revisit that. The other piece is, there's a lot of ways that we give away or like subsidize people's experiences here, and we don't actually capture the revenue. There's a lot of free parking all over the city, and our streets are in really rough shape, but we don't actually look at chances to capture revenue through opportunities for metering on commercial corridors. Lots of ways to just basically offset the cost of free parking that we've not done enough as a city to do, mostly because of the understandable desire for convenience for people to drive their cars everywhere and have that be relatively easy. That's not free, though. There is a cost on every one of us in the city. So, those are some of the ideas that I have. The other, last thing I would say, one of the things that is actually being debated and processed right now through the courts is our Right-of-Way Program. And I've spent a lot of time at my office hours this year, which I regularly have, having folks come up to me and show me their right-of-way bill, and sometimes it just doesn't add up, and it seems like it's really tough. So, I'd like to look at changes to that, too.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to change direction again. We'll start with Chris, and we'll be going to the right.
Did it go on that?
Yes. Yeah. He, he got to start that one.
Thanks for paying attention to me, Chris.
Just check, just check in, going back and forth.
Okay, so we start with Chris and going to the right, so it'll be Chris, Terrence, Mitra. Okay. Affordable housing. What is your solution to help address affordable housing issues in St. Paul?
We had a forum on this two nights ago, and ninety minutes of discussion. Ultimately, there is no grand solution to create affordable housing. That is the judgment of the first director of the Met Council, Jim Solom. He had an interview with the housing organization. He chaired the Minnesota Housing Finance Association for 16 years. We have a lot of programs in place, we don't fund them or support them, and all of the new ordinances, regulations, and taxes make things less affordable, especially for poor people. The trash law is one great example. On my duplex, I have two guys living there, one on each, each unit. They don't even fill one 90-gallon can a week together. I got charged for a second trash can, which I pass the rent on, you know, that charge on to their rent at a, at an extra 15, 20 bucks a month. And there's a host of other regulations like that, that are making it unaffordable. I would like to address some of those things.
Okay, and to Terrence?
I would like us to get our renters to sit down with our homeowners, with our communities, with our developers, our city-state and county officials, to come up with a plan. Because right now, what's happening is our communities are being divided between renters versus homeowners. And if we're going to solve the inherently complex issues surrounding housing, we're going to need everybody at the table, and we can't do that if we're divided. I would also like to work with the Ramsey County Housing Redevelopment Authority, because currently, they have a Housing Redevelopment Authority, but there's no money in it. And that's because of the way that it's set up to spend that money. So, we need to work through those processes to make sure that the money, if it actually gets contributed to the HRA through Ramsey County, is equitably distributed to the people that are paying into that. Not only that, but we need to hold developers accountable. We continue to let developers come in here and build market-rate apartments. We just had four go up on Marshall Avenue without, without a single unit of affordable housing in any one of them, but we are letting them get away with this. We are letting developers drive how we plan our city, and that needs to stop.
Thank you. And to Mitra?
I feel like I've spent two years answering this question and working on it. This is the central thing that motivated me to run for city council last year. I ran for city council in a time where our community had no renter voice on our current council, and I won my special election, and I changed that reality. And I've been working this whole year to make room for everyone in our community, no matter where you hang your hat, no matter how long you've lived here, no matter what you call home, you deserve a home. And I have spent time on our light rail trains with people who literally don't have a home, trying to understand what we can do for shelter. I have passed an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that put $10 million from the parking fund, a whole new revenue source, into making a dent. And the trust fund actually goes to the lowest-income, most struggling families across St. Paul. I've worked to champion zoning and basically using our zoning code as one of the most powerful tools our city can use to make more kinds of housing legal across our community. And I'm working to champion tenant protections this year. There's so much more to do. I feel like I'm just getting started, but this is the heart of my work.
Thank you. I'm just really enjoying the great variety of questions that, that you've all come up with. This is good. Something totally different now, and we're beginning with Terrence. What public arts projects do you support citywide? And we're going right.
So, art is something that is very deep, deeply rooted within my family. I come, again, my wife has a lineage of performance and performance art, through her mother being a traditionally, traditionally-trained flakorico dancer, traveling throughout the world, to my wife carrying on that mantle now, being a performer and a dancer who also travels throughout the world. And I would like to see us provide more opportunities to have community, for, um, excuse me, community organi, community programs at our rec centers and support the, our, our art and our entertainment throughout our city. And I think that we have a very vibrant city, and it was wonderful to see, again, and I know that, Mitra, you helped champion this, to see the entertainment district come up here and to see us bring in local artists and focus a lot on more marginalized and artists of color to come in here and paint our city. And I think that those are efforts that we need to do and that we need to continue to champion, so that we can make St. Paul someplace that is a destination for people to come to. And we do that through art, we do that through entertainment, and those are initiatives that we need to continue to champion, that we need to be at the forefront of, and that we need to continue to support.
Thank you. And going right, that means Mitra?
Great. Ward Four is actually kind of an arts hub for our city. Across the city of St. Paul, we've typically invested a lot of resources into art in downtown because of our historical presence there through the Ordway and the Landmark Center and a lot of other great institutions. But there is a thriving creative economy here in Ward Four, and I have really, really centered supporting that community, passing the entertainment district over here, having Chromosome Mural Festival come, and having a diverse group of artists paint our walls and tell the story of our communities and how they're connected. Cultural Star is the city's biggest arts funding program. We put city money into it to support a whole range of projects, and there are awesome things happening, like Co-Motion Center in Midway, which is a multipurpose, people-of-color-led fitness and arts center that's going to be unlike anything our city's ever had. Our offices worked with them on supporting their effort to get it off the ground. And the last thing that I've really tried to do is use art as a way to combat gentrification and displacement. I have worked over the past year to organize a Neighborhood Benefits Fund for the Hamlin Midway neighborhood as part of a task force that puts money into things like local art.
Thank you. And the final response on the arts, Chris?
I'm running to fix the trash program, fix the roads, and create a safe community policing system. I think that my focus has been on studying how to reduce taxation regulations so housing become, can become more affordable, that we should stop subsidizing developers, possibly redirect funds into, into Section 8 versus 4D. I don't have a proposal to address art programs. It's impossible for, for those of us running to know every program up and down throughout the city. I would love to see these suggestions and evaluate them as they come.
Thank you. Okay, and Mitra will begin the next one, and we're still going right. Small businesses. Small businesses have seen big-impact changes in the last several years, such as earned safe and sick time, a fifteen-dollar minimum wage, and increased taxes. What specific things will you do to advocate for small businesses?
Well, I'd say first of all, I was really proud to champion the minimum wage increase for our community, and also proud to weave that into our earned sick and safe time enforcement. We have a lot of work to do to make sure that those labor policies matter for our community. And so I'm working this year to shape enforcement for minimum wage and also to fund the investigators and community outreach grants in the budget that we actually need to help people get their earned sick and safe time benefits and these policies we fought so hard for. There are ways that businesses tell me all the time, the city is unnecessary in how much permitting and inspection they put them through. Time is money in business, and if you're a small operation trying to get up and running, and you have to go five times down to downtown DSI to get your permit or talk to someone, and they get bounced around to somebody else who lost your case, like, there's just basic customer service things that we have to get so much better at. So I've really been working with our neighborhood businesses on that. And also, the Neighborhood Benefits Fund does specifically name supporting our longtime immigrant, ethnic, and person-of-color-owned businesses to make sure they can stay in the neighborhood for a long time.
So we're going right, and it's Chris.
As I said before, the amount of shuttered businesses I see, we all see, is alarming. I think the results we're getting from the city council are not what they are telling us they are working towards. When you see, I think, six hundred jobs recently eliminated with the changes at Comcast, the closure of Walmart, the closure of Kmart. There's dozens of restaurants that have closed after being in the city for decades. Snuffy's mall shop cited their primary reason being overtaxation and overregulation from the city. So my consistent theme is to make it easier to live here and easier to do business here by reducing regulations and taxes.
Thank you. And the final response on this question, Terrence.
I agree. We can all see the effects of our small businesses closing left and right throughout our city. And often, if you talk to our small business owners, they say doing business here in St. Paul is a hundred times more complex and costs a heck of a lot more than doing business over in Minneapolis. We've kind of created a hostile business environment for our small business owners, not only because of licensing fees and permitting fees and things like that that Mitra talked about, but because of the overregulation and how complicated it is to open, operate, and run a business. I would like to work with the organizations like the Midway Economic Council. You know, we shouldn't, the city shouldn't be making the decisions on how we support our small businesses. The small business owners and the residents in the communities should be the ones, the subject matter experts should be the ones that help the city understand what they need to be successful instead of this top-down approach, and we're going to tell you what's best for you. They seem to be really good at telling our business owners and our residents what's good for us, and we can all see the effects of that.
Thank you. Okay, now we're drifting to go left again, beginning with Chris. Do you believe the city needs to audit the budget again?
Yes, definitely.
And you're allowed to say more than yes or no?
I don't need to say more than that. Yes, we need to audit the budget, absolutely.
The next would then be Mitra.
Well, I'm in my second budget cycle in this job. I was sworn in in September, and I was sworn in at nine AM on that day in 2018. And by ten AM, I was in a budget hearing, and I was looking at what it costs to operate a fire truck and trying to get my head around what it looks like to work with a multimillion-dollar institution like the city. We need to make really smart choices about resourcing our communities right now. We are working in this year's budget to actually just see the new programs that we passed last year, get off to a strong start with the funding they already have. There's a big debate going on about other things that the council has a battle over with related to public safety. A third of our general fund right now actually goes to SPPD, and that's a tremendous, tremendous expenditure. I think there's ways to operationalize SPPD to be more efficient. I think there are a lot of other needs that we could fund that the city doesn't like housing. So I think we should always be auditing the budget and looking for how we could be working smarter, better, and harder. But I'm very clear about what my priorities are in that, and I don't think that we should be doing less just to not be doing anything. I think that it's about working smarter with what we have.
Thank you. And Terrence.
Do you all know that we don't have a city audit? We have a six-hundred-and-eighty-some-million-dollar budget, yet we haven't had our city audited since 2017. So right now, they keep asking for more and more money, but they can't even tell us where the money's being spent and/or if it's effective. So that's great that they want to continue to tax us and raise costs, and we still have declining services. Somebody tell me where our money is going and why we stopped doing city audits. I would also like to propose that our city staffers that are making six figures, one-hundred-and-twenty-some-thousand dollars a year, multiple, multiple positions, take a damn pay cut until we can get our budget under control.
Thank you. And continuing with our left sequence, that means it's going to be Mitra starting. Describe how you would resolve the garbage fight in St. Paul. We're back to garbage. How would you resolve the conflict between citizens and address their concerns?
Well, I think I sort of addressed this earlier, just around the three things that I have seen a huge majority of the argument be about. I would like clarify one position, which is that I strongly believe we need organized collection as a community. I think if we're starting from that starting point, we're saying, let's make a garbage system that works for all of us, then we can talk. But there are folks that are part of the conflict that actually just don't fundamentally want that. It's not all of them, but there are people who just have a different point of view on that. That's not my point of view. I would like to see the changes that I outlined, I named three, I would lift those up again. I think that those three things, if we can solve them, will actually reduce a tremendous amount of the issues that are going on. I think that the referendum underway, I understand the frustration behind it, but I don't see how it's going to actually help us get to the contract we want. I really feel like we have to come back to negotiations, look at how we got here. Part of it is that we listened too much to one piece of community feedback, in my opinion, which is that people all wanted to keep their small holler in the game, and now we are at a weaker bargaining positions with the hollers, instead of just putting it out to an RFP. I think that's one thing we should have looked at more closely.
Thank you. And to Terrence.
We addressed this a little bit earlier, but this goes back to, again, listening. People over and over again say our city isn't listening, and this is a prime example of that, and we have another lawsuit. And if we're going to promote conflict resolution, well, you can't do that with a lack of transparency and the types of dog-and-pony show meetings that we have now, where they open things up for community input, but they're already five steps into the process, and they've already made a decision, or it's too late to make a change to something. And it's all a PR stunt or scripted meetings. If you're going to have true conflict resolution, that starts with authentic community engagement. That starts with listening. That starts, again, with not a top-down authoritarian type of governance, but governance by people, by our communities, and for our communities. And that is an inherent responsibility upon our elected officials. And we need to do that through transparency. Open this back up to the people and stop making decisions that keep getting us into these predicaments year after year.
Thank you. And to Chris. I'd like to remind the audience, please save your applause. I'm glad you're finding things that appeal to you, but save your applause till the end.
Getting too spicy in here, right Florence?
Well, I don't want to take time away from you guys.
It's all good. Obviously, trash is my major reason for running. I'm really glad to hear Mitra say she wants to address the situation with not being able to share, with not being able to help zero-wasters. If these things had been addressed upfront, there wouldn't be a lawsuit, there wouldn't be a problem. The only way the city responds to the citizens' requests and input is via lawsuit. As Terrence has pointed out, we're under three of them right now. This happens repeatedly. There will be, you know there's going to be one on the Ford site right now, because they haven't taken into account citizens' input there. The, being a landlord, there was a lawsuit a couple of years ago about deregulating things like making gravel parking pads into Batuminus parking pads. So they don't listen until they're sued, and then they spend our money fighting us. I think the only way we can fix any of this is by voting no, starting over, having options. And to do that, we need a new city council, period.
Thank you. And the last, going to the left, so we'll begin with Terrence. How can you address safety on the light rail by incorporating restorative practices?
So first off, I want to say that poverty isn't a crime, yet we treat it like it is. And right now, we are facing a significant challenge with our homeless population. And now the light rails are no longer going to be running at night, which displaces hundreds of people. And when you have a lack of access to opportunity, you are going to see inherent challenges surrounding safety. And as someone who has experienced homelessness, we need to support more programs in the communities and the organizations that are doing the work. Because it's going to take the most affected people coming to the table with our communities to help solve these issues. And we have a tremendous amount of opportunity with regard to that. But again, it needs to come through the people to solve these issues. And I just can't reiterate enough that poverty does not equate to crime.
Thank you. And to Chris.
One of my top issues is creating safe community policing environments. The question you asked about restorative justice, I actually find very interesting. I actually ran into Mitra at a St. Anthony Park forum about this, where the victim and the perpetrator have like a sit-down, a peace council, and bring in community members instead of creating a record and a felony and things like that. I think there's a lot of solutions like that we haven't explored, and we need to engage our community better to do that. Part of that is not cutting the police force right now. There are better policing models. There are things that we have not funded, like the Community Oversight Board, PCIARC. There are other things we can do, such as liability insurance for policing. I'm not promoting adding police. I think we do need a transformation, but I also think that working those solutions out with our communities will be best for all of us.
Thank you. And to Mitra.
The original question about safety on the light rail. I hear all kinds of things related to safety, and I think it's really important not to conflate the issues because a persistent anti-transportation, anti-urbanism theme is that public transportation breeds crime and homelessness and all these things. And so, when I really have tried to map the public safety things going on in my ward, which does heavily include the light rail, it comes into St. Paul through our ward, through Ward Four, there's a few correlations. One is, how are we going to support our homeless community, who actually finds the light rail to be better shelter than pretty much all the shelters and other places that there are? I strongly oppose our Met Council decision to put people off the train. I literally stayed up till five AM talking to all of them and hearing what their firsthand issues were. We need to do more as a city besides funding winter safe space and helping people in encampments to take on homelessness, but we also need our county and state partners to help. A lot of the crime happening around the train is actually happening in the big-box, empty retailer parking lots, where nothing is going on at night. Things go down in the parking lot, and then it's happening near train stations. We have to take those on for what they are. That's got to be addressed.
Thank you. And now we're going to go to the right again. So we're back to Chris starting, but we're going to the right, which means looping around. Okay.
Get confused.
What would be the single broadest action the city could enact to fight climate change?
Holy moly, that is a great question. I think the city is starting to do some of that with, obviously, with promoting bike amenities and paths. They converted a bunch of fleet vehicles, recently I read, to green vehicles. You know, I think there's a host of solutions. We're just embarking on that transformation. So, without having an audit and seeing what we're spending on what as far as fuel and waste and pollution output, it's really hard to say one great, grand solution is apparent before us.
Thank you. Terrence.
So our city passed the Climate Resilience Plan recently, which we paid somebody one-hundred-and-twenty-some-thousand dollars to be in that position, but he let Excel Energy pretty much write the plan. So, good for him. And if they're going to write the plan, of course, they're not going to do enough with the plan. And it's a good start, but I believe that we can push Excel Energy a lot farther. And in 2021, we have the opportunity to renegotiate the contract with Excel Energy because they pay a portion of their franchise fee into our general fund. And I believe that they can be doing more to support our eco-friendly initiatives for our city. And that starts with us as a city, holding large corporations like Excel, you know, multimillion-dollar corporations accountable and responsible for providing more for us as citizens and for the future of our city.
Thank you. And Mitra.
In my first year in office, so many of the things that I work on stem back to dealing with cars. Where are we going to put them? Who's going to pay for it? Is it safe to have them there? Why isn't it safe to have them there? How fast can they go? And the amount of subsidy and road design and urban design that happens around that, it has to be taken on very squarely. It has to be at the heart of our climate plan. There is an opportunity in our city to eliminate parking minimums and actually bring down the cost of a lot of new housing, because we're not burdening them with onerous requirements to provide so many spots. We don't have the sunk cost of land that we need for other things, denser, more efficient use, green space, and all the other things that have been talked about, housing, homes. That land that's limited is often being made to go to cars, and we're just perpetuating the cycle we're in over and over and over again. So I would support eliminating parking minimums citywide as a huge structural change we can make to actually start to change how we built our city.
Thank you. I'd like to squeeze in one more question before we get to closing statements. And this one will begin with Terrence, and we're coming right. Police, do you personally think that the police should be increased? Why or why not?
I think we need to do a lot more with regard to reforming our police practices because our policing is historically rooted in harm and trauma to our communities. And that goes back decades with aggressive policing tactics. We need more de-escalation training and less use-of-force training, and it's disproportionate. However, right now, we spent one-point-six-million dollars in overtime to our city's police force over this last year. And over five thousand times, our police officers couldn't respond in the required amount of time to the most high-priority calls. Those are domestics in progress and so on and so forth. And so, you know, as somebody who's led soldiers in combat, I would never want my soldiers to be tired going into situations that they might have to make life-and-death decisions, because that significantly clouds your judgment. And I'm not saying this is a combat zone, but you can draw the parallel between where I'm going with this. And so while we absolutely need reforms to policing, I think we need to support the work that gets us to where we need to be.
Thank you. And to Mitra.
I do not support increasing the police force right now. I think that we mainly use officers as a reactive tool, and we're actually still not solving the root causes of a lot of the problems that we're seeing in our community. We have to be really mindful of how crime statistics get talked about, because a lot of violent crimes in the city are down. But the things that are up that are causing very understandable and unacceptable distress and tension for people are things like shots fired, where gunshots go off, nothing has actually happened to hurt anybody, but it's not normal to live in a place where there's gunfire. That's not something anyone should have to experience. But it then gets used to justify the need for officers. And officers are there to respond when a gun has already been fired, but we need to start way, way sooner than that. So I've been looking at what the city can do to take more action on gun violence that isn't policing, that isn't ShotSpotter, and some of the other very expensive things that some of my colleagues on the council want to support. I've been a huge advocate for community-first trauma response programs, like mental health and other crisis interventions that are not sending traditional officers to help people in crisis. That's a big portion of our calls. Thanks.
Thank you. And the final response on the question, Chris.
I do not support adding to the police force. I do not support deducting from the police force. I think we need to fund them. Especially right now, I think we need to take a hard look at how we police, how the money is spent. We need some cooler heads to prevail. We're in a very turbulent time right now, and a quick reaction one way or another, I don't think is the solution. It seems from statistics, we are in the median range for cities of our size as far as crime and policing. So, there are solutions to make things improve with community involvement. Again, I think there has been a lack of support from the city for the Community Oversight Board. There has, and I lastly propose liability insurance, professional liability insurance carried by the police, similar to doctors who carry malpractice insurance. carried by the police, similar to doctors who carry malpractice insurance. The city has paid out in the last two years over $2.5 million for misconduct, and that would also help our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And that will conclude the question and answer portion of the forum tonight. As you can see, there are a lot of questions still on the table, so if your favorite issue did not get covered, please do speak to the candidates, check out their websites. There are other forums that they've done that you may be able to view online, too. So don't stop here. I just, I'm sorry, but we just can't get everything in. So now, we're going to go on to the closing statements. Each candidate gets two minutes for their closing statement. They'll be done in reverse order of the opening statements, which means the first one goes to Terrence.
Okay. Thank you for changing it up so much. This has been great and confusing, but also great. I said it earlier, and I'm going to say it again. Right now, our city needs a leader. And not only do we need a leader, but we need a leader who listens. And I have dedicated my life to service. I have a track record of standing up and fighting for the people and the causes that I represent, and I do not plan on stopping now. And right now, more than ever, we need transparency, and that is why my motto is T is for transparency. And I don't say those words lightly. That actually means something to me. And we are at a pivotal time where we have to put people back over politics and not the other way around, because none of this, none of this is about me, none of this is about Mitra, none of this is about Chris. This is about our future and the future of our city. This truly is about us. And a vote for me is a vote for us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next closing statement will be from Mitra.
Well, I'm really, really thankful for the questions here tonight. I have been running for this seat, and I have been working to build space and progress and room for underrepresented people in our community since I first got into this journey in February 2018. I am really proud of the work that we've been able to do together in a year. We have put millions of dollars on the table for our community, for our most vulnerable residents. We have pushed difficult conversations that people often have not engaged in because they were afraid of the conflict or they were afraid of rocking the boat, and we have made change in the culture of City Hall. And I am running to keep leading change in our city with all of you in my first full term. I really feel like we are on the cusp of a critical moment. I have learned so much in my first year in office of how we can make the city work well for everybody. I feel like we are poised for breakthrough, and I am running to keep leading that change with all of you. So I greatly appreciate the honor it's been to serve our community. I'm running to earn your vote again and serve us for one full term as we keep moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final closing statement from Chris.
My name is Chris Holbrook. I'm running to fix the trash program, fix the roads, and provide a safe community policing environment. I really think the city needs to get back to basics. There are a lot of grand ideas coming out of City Hall, but they're really resulting in dismissive arrogance and condescension towards we, the residents. The solutions to all these problems, and so many things came up tonight, come from you, the people. We need to listen to that and implement it. We need to cover, do the blocking and tackling before we go for these fancy, you know, Statue of Liberty plays. So I don't believe, you know, I'm not an absolutist, I'm not, I don't support binary choices, this or that, us versus them. I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I've always been independent. I think everyone needs to judge for themselves, the issues of, you know, the results of what we're getting from these decisions. There's some great talking points, but the facts bear out some different realities. So I would appreciate your vote or your second choice vote, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. So that concludes our forum. It's been an interesting evening for me. I hope you've all found it very interesting, and I want to thank the candidates for the time they've given us. It's not easy to be where they, sitting where they are, let me tell you. So, and I want to thank the audience for coming out and giving us so many great topics to talk about. This is what makes democracy work, when we can all participate and have a, an informed vote. So remember, the election's November 5th. Take a friend and vote. Thank you and good night.[1736.51][1736.51]